Okay, thank you. Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Orange Board of Finance. Today's Monday, September 18th. We'll call the meeting to order at 7:02. I think that's the best time we've made in a long time. I'd like to start by having everyone introduce themselves, beginning on my right.
Kevin McNabola.
John Cifarelli, Finance Director.
Joe Nuzzo.
Jim Leahy.
Deep Jen.
Kevin Hulahan, thank you. Item number three, public dialogue. No? Okay, thank you, sir. Okay. Jim?
Oh, you want to do it. A member of our team. Unfortunate situation, no details we want to get into, but myself, my prayers, and I'm sure we all feel that way, but you can all chime in. Kevin Moffett. Let's call it an injury of some form, best kept to his family, and I just wanted to acknowledge that I myself, and I'm sure the team misses him. And, and I just wanted to say that out loud.
Thank you. No, we all miss him, and our prayers are with him and his family for sure.
I'll get along soon, Kevin.
Yep.
Okay. Okay. Item number four, Amity update.
Well, good evening, everyone. Good to see everybody after a nice summer. So, we met last week at the Amity Finance Committee, last Monday night. Nothing too major on the agenda. We had our quarterly performance with the pensions, so I'd like to start with performance overview of the pension, OPEB, and the sick and severance funds. So, the Amity pension has a balance of about $16.2 million right now. The performance quarter-to-date was 4.4 percent, year-to-date just under 10 percent, and then the one-year, 11, just over 11, and then the three-year at 8 percent. The Amity OPEB has a balance of $3.4 million, quarter-to-date, 3.6 percent return, year-to-date almost nine, and one-year, 10 and a half, three years about 8 percent, so similar to the Amity pension. And then lastly, sick and severance has about 4.69 as a balance. Performance is quarter-to-date 3.3, year-to-date 8.2, one-year 8.7, three-years 5.7. So, I think we've all kind of seen the market was up this year, was down a little bit recently, but had a pretty good start to the, to the year. Settled down a little bit recently, but overall, pretty, pretty good, good performance. On the financials, we, I know we've talked about year-end actuals now, so I think we all know the surplus was about 1.4 million, with a transfer account of just over a million or 2 percent. So, it's 2.4 million plus on the surplus overall, which I know we've discussed previously. The forecast for August of '23 is a surplus of 4.09 at this point. Transfer account is empty. Nothing has been allocated to that account just yet.
So, the 2.4, they took a million of it already for their capital.
2 percent.
So, the 1.4, are they gonna credit us back like they did this year?
1.4 credit for all, for three times.
So, they are gonna do that?
March. Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, our share's just under 700?
Yes. 50 percent, as we know, is, is our percentage.
You're wrong, Mr. Chairman. You get right to the point. Good job.
It's all about the money. And then, we had an interesting conversation. So, so in, on the AFC, we had a motion for amounts over $3,000. And let me just grab that for one second here. So, so we had a couple of motions in excess of 3,000. One was to cover spill prevention control countermeasure plan, $4,200 bucks. That was a small one. Fussin' O'Neil, not a big deal. The special ed was a pretty good topic of discussion at that meeting. Mr. Brandt was there. He was requesting a transfer this month to cover a portion of the unfunded state mandate of extending special ed services until the end of the school year in which a student turns 22. So, have you heard that yet, Kev? Okay.
I had not. I knew, I thought at age 22, like, you could be November 20th, and you were just, that's it.
Right.
So, now they're saying November to the next June.
Whoa, right. So, if their birthday is July 1st, they'll go through June of the following year. It sounds like the state is either running out of funds or has already exhausted those funds in that program. So, there's going to be a gap in this budget because of that. So, as part of, of our motions, we approved $45,000 that came out of tuition, public out, to the private out tuition, to public to the private. And that was to cover the outplaced tuition costs until the end of the school year, and when the student turns 22. So, again, I guess it must have just started July 1st.
It's a new program.
Yes, new program. And that's kind of like, I get it, but, so like I said, July 1st, if that's their birthday, they go through June of the next year, the following school year. So, there's.
Because it was kind of, there's a cost to it, but I know from, you know, a family member being a special ed teacher, if you did have somebody, when they're 22, that day, they're like, they're graduated. It's like, it's October or it's November. It's just haphazard, but.
They said through the end of the school year. So, they said, so he was telling us that for the, for this budget, '23, '24, there's $285,000 unbudgeted as of now.
Who?
So, that's a pretty good-sized hole.
Compared to their $2.1 billion surplus.
They should be able to handle it.
I think it's 8 percent.
They could handle it.
I'm wishing all the best.
Yeah. So, that was, that was one of the main topics of discussion at that meeting. Other than that, that was, that was basically it. Nothing major happening at this point. So, it wasn't, it wasn't a big agenda for us.
I had noticed, Joe, that there were an increase. Let me see if I can find it. I have it up on the screen. Tuition revenue, there it is. It's in the middle of the screen, guys. I'll highlight it, and hopefully, it's in a highlight that, that helps you guys rather than hurts you. But, so I looked at this, and I said, hmm, isn't that interesting? We budgeted 58, and we already have a forecast of 1.24. If I'm got, if I'm in the right hand. So, they thought they'd have 58, and then their new forecast back in July, and now in August. In other words, seemed to me we got a lot more students coming in from out of district if we got tuition revenue coming in. That's my guessing what that is. Now, the way, by the way, not to wear you guys out, but since you may or may not be, need a refresher like I do every once in a while. You can get your detail in the Word document. Here's the tuition revenue one. So, let's just see if eight students are enrolled. Three at reduced employee rates, okay. Well, tuition rate is 21 that. All right, so they have eight at that, and then there's a reduced rate. So, it's eight times 21, but a subtraction, right, Kev, for the reduction. So, it's higher than what they thought. Joe, I'd be interested in, you know, they make a budget, they come up with a 58, and I'm not too worried about it. I'd just like to understand it better, you know? People are coming to Amity. I'd just like to understand that better. It's a little bit in the, how come they said this and it's that? But it's, it's not even, even if it was a larger amount of money, I'm really, I'm really trying to understand why a category would be that much of an increase, and why more and more people seem to be coming to Amity. That's great. I just wanted to understand it better. So, maybe you could track that one down in the next meeting.
I mean, it sounds to me like unless the parents notify the school that they're coming September, and the budget is over June 30, they may not know at that point.
They moved here over to summer. We have a lot of new people in, in the area.
Yeah. But, hold on. Tuition comes from not in the district.
Right. Somebody that just might have moved, whether it be New Haven.
Oh, was here, moved out, and want to maintain the kid there?
Or, they moved in and want to go Amity and stuff.
That would be the type of thing I would like to understand.
Yeah, okay, sure.
And I'm not, I don't need one-for-one, but just, just some, some words to go around.
Joe, any discussion about upcoming contracts, labor contracts at all? No? Some, some of the bigger ones, I think, are coming up.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it's gonna be interesting, because the wage rates are increasing. 2.75, 3 percent would not be out of the range, I don't think, in this coming year.
Especially, depending, the UAW might set a record. That's gonna be trending down ever, you know, who knows?
We still have, as we all remember, the debt service at Amity over the next three years goes from 4.4 million to 600,000.
Goes down, starting to go down.
All right. Maybe it's four years, I maybe we won't. So, you know, there's, there's some.
Upside, potentially.
You know, particularly, yeah, if you look at it holistically, I think. Good job, Joe.
Thank you, guys.
All set, Joe? Thank you.
Yes, good, thank you.
Okay, item number five, Vice Chairman's Report. Mr. Leahy.
Yeah. I got two topics. I'll send it out to you guys after I'm done. One of the things I am definitely not a fan of is putting together these presentations. Anyway, I guess I decide to do it myself, don't I? So, anyway, two topics. I learned last week something called quote "double pay in education." So, I'm gonna spend a couple of minutes with you for what I know. I'm not saying 100, I'm, I'm gonna give you my sources and that. And I would like to go back and take another peek at the Amity to last year's budget that ended in, in June, and I have three comments about that. Less than 10, 10 actual slides, cut slides, not counted. So, this isn't counted either. What am I gonna cover? Double pay in education funding, the information I've recently learned, I gotta wanna make sure people on the team here know, and anybody in the community who watches, including our one citizen in, welcome. I'll tell you what I know, or what I found out, all right? I'd like to learn more about that. Okay, so, and then I have the calendar at the end. So, double funding in education. All right, first of all, on the bottom of this page, earlier, I had at the top of the page, so I apologize for that, says, "Stop the double pay play in education." That's the statement. That was the article by Kimberly Fiorello, a former, actually, Connecticut State Representative. She was, was published in the Greenwich Sentinel. So, rather than, I was twisting around in it, and then I said, why don't I just quote it and then comment about it? In the article, and the link is there, all right, "A student enrolled in an inter-district magnet school program shall be considered a student enrolled in the school district in which such students reside." So, here's some words in this House bill. "And a student enrolled in an agricultural science and technology education center." So, you've got magnet school, you've got science and technology, "shall be considered a student enrolled in the school district in which that student resides." In the article, it goes on further, "This literally means, let's pretend the student is in two places at the same time and send money to both buildings." That caught my eye. Then, the next part of the article said it works like this. "Jane is registered public school student, but does not attend the school, signed to her by her zip code. Instead, she attends a magnet school, or it could be a vocag school, charter school, could be anything like that. You would think, then, that the district's school enrollment numbers would go down by one student because Jane is not attending that school. It does not. Currently, both schools report Jane is being enrolled, and both schools, highlighted, get paid state funds. This practice of paying twice for some students is a big open secret in Connecticut education among some politicians and education bureaucrats." I thought this was amazing. Before I decided I would present it to you, I attended a Zoom meeting that was another gentleman, whose name's gonna be in the next couple of slides. He runs a charter school in Hartford, he runs a charter school in Bridgeport, he runs a charter school in Harlem, New York, nationally recognized. Steve Perry, that's his name, very loquacious African-American man. So, I said to myself, hey, let me visualize what's going on. You know, I wouldn't put words like that in front of my seventh-grade mask. I'd draw a picture. So, we got the student on the left, who is, would normally be in the neighborhood school, and that money is example that Steve Perry made, and I'll come back to that. But the person, that student actually at Penn, some other school, magnet school, vocag school, charter school. And I put down 12,000, but the amount really varies depending on what type of school, and some people want to say, hey, you should get this full 16.5 or something, but that's a separate issue. I wanted to focus solely on the issue of what's going on in this double funding thing. Because it seemed a little funny to me. So, I was asking myself, oh, if we're paying money to two entities when there's only one student, I said to myself, how much money is involved, kick a box bottom of the page, in this double funding methodology? In essence, what does it cost Connecticut taxpayers, who obviously, we foot the bill? They're both being paid by the state when you have a situation like this. So says this article, so says Steve Perry. I'm beginning to believe it. The estimate of the cost, and I have the sources written there, is that approximately 45,000. Now, I ran the numbers, and there's something wrong with these numbers, I'll tell you right now. So, I would like to get, but it's a large amount of money. That is obvious, all right? And exciting students out of about 530,000. So, I didn't know there was that many students not in the public schools who go to other schools, but was really news to me, and I think should be news to everybody who pays taxes in this state, which is why I'm presenting it both to the Orange Board of Finance and to the public at large, is that the estimates they give, and I would very much like to run my own numbers once I get the data, is about 300 to 350 million. I've seen numbers a little bit higher. I couldn't make a jive, though, with the 45,000 in the amounts that are on this page. However, so the source is, source is there. Steve Perry, you can look him up. He's head of the Capital Peritoy Schools in Bridgeport, Hartford, in Harlem, New York. Kim Fiorello, you can look her name up, and you'll get the article in, in the Greenwich Sentinel of a year ago. But what I found really interesting, I said to myself, well, how much is this double funding? And it's about 10 percent of the cost of the Connecticut Department of Education budget. 10 percent. So, if that were happening, and if it were, what would my daughter, my son tell me one time, Dad, that's not a good idea. If that was not a good idea, it's more than a little bit of money here. Okay? That's what I've learned. So, I bring that to this board. If you have any questions, I'll tell you what I know. You can look up the article with the link. Any questions from what I presented, at least here tonight?
So, Jim, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Do we have some students who will fit this category, like going to Amity and going to some magnet school?
We, well, we certainly do. How much, I don't think it inflicts Amity that much. I'm, I'm really, when I was looking at this, I was not thinking of, oh, let me run to Amity and find out. Oh, I'd like to find out, sure.
There are a few.
Yeah, there are a few. But the magnitude of the numbers probably do not come from, from schools like.
And our, our ECS money, our state funding is so nominal.
Right.
It's not, it's not what's coming to Orange. It's what's going to New Haven, Hartford, and Bridgeport.
Yeah. I would think so.
That's where it is.
Yeah. And what you'd see.
And they're getting double paid and.
Well, what Steve Perry is really ticked off, he, yes, he's, he's supporting the idea, and I told him, because I was on the Zoom call, I said, Steve, I have to leave at 9 o'clock. This was some night last week. I had procedure the next morning. I said, look, can I, can I give you a couple thoughts? Yeah, because he was saying, you know, he was talking about this issue, he was talking about this issue, he was talking about this issue, and they're all valid, and I agree with all of it. But if you, if you don't focus on one at a time, you can kind of lose your audience a little bit. All right? Or the audience may say, I agree with you with the first two, but not the third, whatever. So, what he was also championing is he wanted the magnet vocag and charter schools to be getting, to use the, the full amount, the 16.5, the number in blue, all right? And that's a separate issue. I think, I think I would agree with him, okay? Particularly if it wasn't going to the neighborhood school, okay? But there's a lot more details, a lot of people, there might be a lot of other things I don't know, and we don't know, but I, there's enough there for me that I would, I think we would wanna kind of peek in that. But yeah, um, this is what I know, so, uh, yeah. Did that, did I help at all, or Kevin?
That, that is a lot of money, like going waste?
Potentially. Waste is exactly the number, uh, I would, I wrote in my notes, but I want, didn't wanna put on the slides, because I don't know for sure. So that's the first thing I bring to you. Anything else, guys?
No, that's interesting.
Deb, you're on the team?
So what was, what was Steve Perry's background? Was he an educator in like the public school system?
I happen to not get rid of his thing, you can rate it right there. Uh, national icon in education revolution, a change agent, et cetera, you can see it there, I can send you this link if you want. Doesn't take you much to figure, when you put in Steve Perry.
Former president of the top schools in the country.
Yeah.
Doesn't say which one it was.
Yeah.
Guys aren't that good with that.
And Jim, one more question, this is happening only in Connecticut?
I do not know for a fact. I do know that there was a consultant at the Zoom meeting. Um, I, I tried to look up his, you know, I, I got his name, I asked for his slides.
I'd be surprised, I wouldn't, I'd be surprised if it's only Connecticut. I would think Massachusetts would be in that mix, I would think.
Well, Steve Perry's comments were, or maybe it was the.
New York, especially if he's in Harlem, too.
New York, yeah.
As a matter of fact, let me get my notes out here, since you guys are asking. There was something called, and I tried to look it up, I couldn't find it. Uh, pace setters organization, Nathan was his name. They had a video, and again, the video combined all the different issues, not, to me, I'd like to start with the one issue, and then we'll go to the second issue.
Yeah, I thought he just might have kind of like veered off and said, hey, you know, he was a principal within the public school systems, maybe in the inner city. And he said, you know what, I got a better idea on how to educate these kids, so.
Well, he's been doing it, and he's been doing, he, he, he stated, and his bio states it, and, you know, I think he, well, whatever he observed from his end of the video.
Yeah.
Um, but, uh, he said, we get the most results at the lowest cost. And, um, whether it's, whatever, you can read about it, and it's an interesting thing. So that's, that's what I knew. Yeah, here's my four circled, uh, pink things here, when I thought he had four different issues, and he's talking about them, sometimes in the same sentence. It was not helping the brain get to where he wanted them to go, in my judgment, but he's a very persuasive and powerful man, and I liked him very much. And this was Kimberly, um, who's the other one, and I think, no, can't show you that one. I think this is the article, is this the article? And again, that's the link I sent you, double pay, stop the double pay play in education. You know, she talks about when she got there, she couldn't believe it, you know, that kind of thing.
Yeah.
And then she explained it very well, I thought. Anything else on this one, guys? I don't wanna go too late on you.
That's great.
All right, great, thank you. Uh, second item to talk about, um, now I have to get my own sightings right. All right, AMITI budget results are in, we now know the results, Joe, right? And you mentioned it, and these are the same numbers that Joe mentioned, um, so let me run through the slide. In June of two thousand twenty-two, a year, a little over a year ago, the AMITI fiscal year twenty, uh, twenty-two, twenty-three budget passed on the third referendum vote. I think everybody remembers that. And as of the year, fiscal twenty-two, twenty-three, the budget surplus was, it actually is a different number. I got two numbers, Joe, what, what Terry has done, I think, and maybe I goofed it up, and if it's mine, fine. But the numbers are not that different. In one of the reports, it was two point four million thirteen, three eighteen, and another one, what they did is they, they, they changed the net balance, or they, one of the numbers got changed slightly. But it's in the two point four range either way. Identified the two budgets, the fiscal year twenty-two, three percentage budget increase compared to the prior year that was passed was three point one nine, and there is, there it is, the three point nine one nine, with the amount of the increase right there. The dollar increase was passed was one million six fifty-one, five fifty, five ninety-eight. So, when we passed the three point one nine percentage increase, we were approving an increase of a million six for last year's budget. So, at the end of the school year, the actual budget used, or the amount of spending for that year, was only fifty million nine thirty-six, four eighty-seven. All right, and again, this number's a little off, sorry. As a matter of fact, what I'll do is I'll change it now, because what happened is I found out the error up above, um, when I was in the home stretch of looking through everything. And then you got this... So what you get is you get this number of the amount of money spent is only fifty million nine forty-five, six fifty-two. So the amount that the budget passed, which is right up above here, less, less than the surplus, gets you to that number. So I'll put the new number of surplus in, Joe, that was the most recent one from Terry, okay? Why it shifted, I'd have to investigate. Regardless, I think we all know the point. If you increase a budget by one point eight, six million, and you have a surplus of two point four million, you didn't even need all the increase. That's the math. As a matter of fact, it was a reduc, the, the actual spending was less than the prior year's budget by seven hundred and fifty-two thousand, five fifty-five, which was a, would have been a reduction of one point four six percent. That's the data. Results are in.
Well, now the surplus is, Jim, allow them to keep their two percent, which is nice for future, you know, offset of borrowings potentially, and some other projects. But they basically give us credit for the others. Again, it gets them, it gets them a two percent to do what they need.
There's a lot of questions, Joe. We know, and we'll get to all of them, I guess, but it's not, nothing new at this point, and probably the more people that watch OGA, and, or see this in some capacity on YouTube, they get familiar with it, and they could form their own judgments. Uh, but the data is the data. So that was the first thing I wanted to mention to you. Oh, I have to actually go back here to be able to do that, um, slideshow. So here's what I did, I said, this is my reflection of what I think happened. We had three referendums. Joe, I think before we even got to the first referendum of four point nine nine, you were in a very, very heated discussion when it was, excuse me, three point nine nine, when it was four point nine nine, remember that? And that got re, voted down, and the three point five nine got voted down, and the AMITI vote has passed the budget at three point one nine, back June, the third one. We here at the Orange Board of Finance, if I remember, looked it upright, we supported only up to a point four one, zero point four one percent increase, because we understood the difference between percentage increases and actual increases compared to budgets and that sort of thing. Well, we, as we can see visually here, the actual need was less than that, significantly less than that, and we ourselves overshot the mark by almost a factor of four. So that's the ra, that's the reflection, that's what happened. Peace. Questions? I have one more item to talk about. What I did, and you've seen this slide before, back in January, when AMITI came in to present their budget. This is not a new phenomenon. The orange and the blue, the blue is the increase, you can see that one point six four one, five nine eight, right over here. You can see the surplus number, I think I got the most recent one, Joe, up here, it's two point four million odd. But in other years recently, you can see the differences. In, in each case, AMITI performed its job, I think, real well, all the way back to whatever we were ranked in mid-two thousand fifteens, to wherever we are ranked now, by whatever methodology. They performed their job without the need for any budget increase they could have. You couldn't do it every single year, you couldn't have a stable budget for ten years. But in any one year, you can see that, uh, and it's clearly not connected to COVID, goes back to a lot of years when, when Obama was still president. So, um, that's what I have for you on the second item. And that's, I think, the point you were making, Joe. Third item, and that's the implication for how we should view the current year that we're in. And the way to think about it, the way I would teach it, I'm not sure it's the best way to look about it, but I know I would be drawing this graph on the right-hand side, that in any one particular year, once it's closed, you either have spent the money or you have it in surplus. And there should be a surplus of some, we're always talking about magnitude here. And then on the next year, you have the budget, the full budget from the prior year, in this case, two thou, uh, two thousand twenty-two and two thousand twenty-three, and you have an increase on top of that. So once again, let's look at the data. We can see that the budget from two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three was fifty-three, three ninety-eight, eight oh four. We know that the budget that got passed was fifty-four thousand, five fifty-two, seven fifty-nine, that's just data. So the increase is the difference between the two. That's a two point two five, remember that got passed, Joe? Uh, budget increase. But now we know. We know that last year, we now know the green. We know the surplus is two point four million. So the actual spent, as you can see, is the number down there. And now we know that there is not a one point two increase, there's an increase in budget of one point two million, yes. Two point two five percent. But the increase in spending available, and again, you have to, you can't just say, oh, this is due with education, it's the department, it's taxpayers' money, I'd be doing the same analysis, all right, down, down at Donnie Fayers Highway Department, right? Your budget, lush, your surplus is fifty million nine fifty-four, six fifty-two. So your increase to get up to that fifty-four, five fifty-two number is three point six million. Seen from that perspective, the actual percentage increase is seven point zero eight percent. You know, the other night, Joe, I did, I didn't go to the, um, AMITI, um, um, Finance Committee meeting, but I get, went to the AMITI BOE meeting. And I heard at least one, if not more, people talking about the, um, small increases that AMITI has to live with, like, you know, you know, swimming in deep water. Um, I'd like to point out that a large surplus in a year means that the budget component, in this case, it happens to be AMITI, but it could be any, have a far higher percentage spending increase available than the budget increase amount. In other words, three point six, a lot bigger than one point two. Okay? Am I, are we tracking team, or, if I'm off, tell me, but that's what I'm, that's the way I see the numbers. And the final charge is this, this is not news to us. Because we had all those surpluses you saw before, what we have started to learn is that, yes, we've had all these very small blue increases. Maybe there's a little bit differences now, but what we have here is data complete. I'm not sure why I have two of those blue things there, if you allow me, I'll get rid of one of them, I best have a, a double hit there somehow. Sorry about that, team, sorry about that audience. I can certainly do better, as can we all. So as you can see, they're actually operating in an environment which the amount of money available is way over the, obviously very over the blue. And also because they have the safe, they have a lot of money available, they continue to have more surpluses, because they have a zone, a large zone, we're trying to get it a little bit smaller, all right? A larger zone, all right, in which to operate, all right? And so I pulled a, if you can, if you're really good with your eyes, you might see a little gray box there. I hand did, I did the best I could to make it look the same, and in fact, I have to look up one of the Orange numbers and make sure I get it right. But anyway, uh, I know directionally where it is, but that's, that's what we got here, okay? So it seems to me, the proper way to view funding support from the view of the town is not to be looking at the size of the budget, the budget increase, nothing to do with it. As you could see over here, right? Oh, it's only two point two five, well, no, it's seven percent. Peace, that's what I got.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, item number six, discuss and vote to return excess quasharing reimbursement to the Orange Board of Education. Memo from Christine Koch. John, this is just pretty much routine every year?
Yes, we do this every year, either in June or July, and this year we carried over till September.
Well, I'll make that motion, unless you wanna talk about it, Kevin?
I, anybody else? I'm, I'm fine.
Yeah, I second the motion. I mean, the memo, the memo kind of outlines and explains everything that's transpired, so.
Motion by Jim, second by Kevin, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, unanimous?
Can I make a, 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 a process question? So PDF has told me they got a new version. I would love, love, if I knew the only thing I use in PDF, Joe, zoom in or zoom out? And I can't find it, so. I, I, wait a minute, hold on, hold on, I think, I think we, we're rocking, we're rocking with it. I just found it there, good team, sorry.
So now, all right, so item number seven, funding request. A, allocate funds from American Rescue Funds for design engineering services for Brookside Drive and Glenbrook Road, the amount of one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, six hundred dollars.
Okay, Board of Selectmen took this up, I believe it was a July meeting, July or August. This is now to go prepare construction bid documents for this project. Go out and do some more testing in the road, looking for ledge and things along that way, and get the documents ready to put out on the website for bid.
Propose A and B, John?
And now let's take one at a time.
Okay, so this is just design type of stuff, right?
This is design and bid documents. So in other words, any of the construction companies that wanna bid on it, these are the plans they'll get.
Who was, uh, who was awarded the bid, do we know?
Uh, Cardinal Engineering.
Cardinal, gotcha.
Cardinal Engineering, they're the one that did the preliminary plans.
Yep.
They're the ones we've been using quite a bit in the town. They did the bridge at Derby Milford Road and Grassale Road and so forth.
Process question, because I don't know this real, at all. So we, for, for an amount of money, what they're in, one hundred and thirty-eight, got it. We have to prepare some stuff so that the people who wanna bid on it can see what that is, and there's a, those documents are what we're doing now.
Those documents are what the construction companies bid off of. It basically tells them what the job is, in construction language.
Part of my brain that wants to think that we're gonna solve this problem for a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, I should tell it, it's a two-step process.
It'd be ten times that amount, if we're lucky.
It's estimated at a million dollars.
That was close. I just wanted to be sure.
It's actually a three-step process. They originally went out there, looked at the job, met with the residents, had a public hearing, I think, one of the Board of Selectmen meetings, and came up with an idea. Now this idea, the town has told them to go forward with it, the Board of Selectmen, take this idea, and they put it in construction documents.
From our side, it would be Britton's department?
Britton and the Board of Selectmen.
Okay, and, and Donnie would be, have been involved in that, no?
No, not at all. It's not a, it's not a public wor, public works employee process, this is all gotta go outside.
Yeah.
We don't have the equipment or the manpower to do that.
This is basically, Jim, all the engineering and design services, this is basically what it is.
Yeah, but, but I just wanted to, you know, I always. Yeah, but I just wanted to, you know, I always draw pictures and that way I've always found that, you know, oh, I didn't know that, says a guy for twenty-five years who's done working with Deb, you know? And, you know, I just, I just go by what, and if it makes me look stupid, fine, I don't care. Okay, so do we approve, what's our role?
We approve the funding.
We approve the funding.
Now, do we approve the funding and where it comes from, or do we?
Like I've done with this American Rescue Funds. I've had both the Board of Selectmen and you approve using that fund. So I want to have both boards on board with that fund.
And you and I have a next step for me to work with you getting that, remember that Excel sheet, initial one that you've built off of?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
We should get that and roll in again this year. Okay, thank you.
So they, they recommended that it come out of the American Rescue Funds.
Which is great. It's better than fund balance or capital, because we have that money.
Yeah. It's sort of intended.
Yeah.
Yep, I'm good. Do we need to hold on each of these separately?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the one-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand, six-hundred for Cardinal Engineering, for engineering design services for Brookside Drive and Glenbrook Road.
Second.
Second by Ajit. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain, unanimous. Thank you, Kevin. Okay, number B, allocate funds from American Rescue Fund for construction engineering services at Old Country Lane and Coachman's Lane.
Okay, now this is different. This, we've already awarded the contract to the, to the construction company to do this, which is going to happen sometime next year because they can't get the culvert made quick enough.
They're way back order.
But this is now for Cardinal Engineering to oversee the construction there, that they do it according to their plans and bid documents. This is their.
So they went through a step, let me call the last one, there was a step A, and we're funding one-thirty-eight for the step A, and then we go?
No, no, two different projects, totally two different projects.
So we don't have a construction project on this B?
No, you've already had the design engineering project on it. Now you're going to the construction engineering project. There's, there's different steps, there's.
This one's ahead of the other one?
Right.
Yes, yes.
I'm trying to get what.
This is already, this.
Do they have the same process flow?
Yes. This one, though, has already had the construction documents designed. It's gone out to bid, it's been awarded, you've already awarded the funding.
I'm tracking you.
This is just now to have somebody oversee the construction that they do when they physically do the construction.
So the person who did that initial thing or somewhere in the design phase?
Same company that's going to oversee the construction.
It's going to make sure, hey, you're doing it the way I want it, don't cut any corners over here.
They're like a, they're like a project manager for the town.
That's where it's going.
That's what I would call them.
Now, this one-thirty-eight company?
Same company, but doing a different job.
When they get to that construction phase of A, they'll have one of these B ones, right?
After they figure, and it's this one-thirty-eight, they'll go out to bid. The Board of Selectmen will award the bid again.
Right.
And then Bob Britton will go back to the Board of Selectmen and say, okay, I want to award a construction engineering contract to Cardinal, maybe Cardinal Engineering, it could be anybody, to oversee the construction there to make sure it's done right.
And that'll be done.
Correctly.
And that's called construction engineering services.
Right. It's really like a project management service.
Project manager of the construction services.
Yeah.
So we know what it is, right?
Right, okay. So if I was at a whiteboard at Sikorsky with a team, I would have told them that they just told me that the first step is design engineering services, the second step is bid and select, right? Third is construction, and the fourth step, which is kind of separate, three A and three B there together, is a construction engineering services to oversee the, oversee is a little strong. Work with, or whatever you want, whatever that verb would.
Oversee, oversee.
Oversee is a pretty good word.
They did, they did the same thing at Derby Milford Road. They oversaw the construction there, too.
Well, helps me understand the process, so thank you for being patient.
And that's one of the reasons why they've been, they've been picked, or maybe that's selected, maybe a better word.
So actually, A is a step one and B is a step four. Wow, okay.
So, John, do we get multiple bids for designing also?
Do we?
Do we get multiple bids?
Oh, when you put it out to bid, you do, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, particularly for something that's magnitude.
I think there were, I think there were seven bids on this, and they ranged from a million dollars, I think the one we accepted, to over two million.
For the construction.
For the.
For Old Country, really?
For Old Country.
Yeah, for step two, okay, good.
So do we have a motion?
Sure. I'll mention the step four, or the whatever's there, to allocate funds from American Rescue Fund for construction engineering services at Old Kate Lane and Coachman's Lane for twenty-seventh bid.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain, unanimous. Thank you. Item number C, allocate funds from capital account to fund new doors at the Public Works Garage.
This is a memo, oh, no.
Yeah, I asked Bob to give me a memo on this one. And it's pretty much the same memo that went to the Board of Selectmen, and the Board of Selectmen approved the, because the contract with Crawford Door Stratford for twenty-thousand, one-seventy to replace, I believe it's three doors and all the mechanicals that go with the doors. The, the three doors we're replacing, believe it or not, were put in by Crawford Door about fifty years ago.
Really? So hopefully we get another fifty years. That'd be great.
They lasted a long time. Unfortunately, they broke now and they had, they had trouble getting the trucks out of the garage one day because they broke, and they're, they're pretty old and they're, they could have either pieced them together or put in new doors, and we said, let's go with the new doors. If they break in the winter when we're in a snowstorm, we're not going to get the trucks out, so.
And somebody's going to get hurt.
Well, that was the other thing, those big springs or whatever there, they break, they come down.
It's not a garage door at a house, it's a heavy-duty.
And quite frankly, for three doors, it seems like a pretty good price.
Make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, before. Is, do we need an up-to amount, John, or is it twenty-one-seventy?
I would make it that exact amount.
Okay.
If it goes over, they could take it out of there.
All right, so back to Joe. So Joe, you made the motion, Ajit seconded. Any further discussion?
I have a point of understanding, thank you. The last paragraph of this memo that we have in front of us, that I not only have enlarged, but I've been able to highlight in some capacity. Process question, John?
Yeah.
The Board of Selectmen discussion included, the project should be funded from the town's capital funds. Again, the process question is this, who decides where the money comes from, or do we have to get to an agreement?
Us.
We decide.
It's all on us.
All right, so when we have stuff like this, we decide where it comes from.
Right, and it's like John has in our agenda to use it out of the capital projects account.
I, I think that's great. I'm just trying to get, it really comes down to roles and responsibilities of the different function, of different entities.
If you, if you said you wanted them to find it out of their budget, they would have to find it out of their budget.
The Board Selectmen?
No.
No, no, Public Works.
Public Works.
Oh, no, that's not what I was thinking. I was thinking, okay, we got this extra thing, and we have different money sources, right? And you're saying we can decide what that is. Can we decide, but to use any of the American Rescue Funds, we would also have to get the Board of Selectmen to agree?
That's how we've been doing that fund, just so we don't, we're not our neighbors.
I just, and that's our role, that's our process.
Nobody's taking money somewhere else.
Yeah, okay. Thank you for being patient.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain, unanimous. Item eight, discussion and approval of minutes from June nineteenth, twenty-twenty-three. It's been a while.
It's amazing, yeah.
Time flies when you're having fun.
Yeah, apparently.
Oh, man, forget this, I can't do this. We in the minutes?
Yep.
John, you're batting weed off here, boys. Neither of our teams are doing very well these days, although your Giants came back yesterday.
You got to remind me.
Come on, after a Giants victory like that, I guess, hey, you kidding me?
Long as I finish over the Red Sox, I'm good.
It'll be a long winter, it'll be a long winter.
Okay, let's start on page three.
All right. We're with you, Jim.
Okay, where that paragraph starts in bold, when Mr. Moffett made a motion?
Yes.
To approve one-hundred-and-ten-thousand?
Mm-hmm.
That should be one-hun, one-million, one-hundred-and-ten-thousand, which includes a ten percent contingency. So I would change that dollar amount and take the plus out there.
So it's one-point-one million?
One-point-one million.
I support that, too, now.
Good.
It makes sense above.
Yeah.
Deb, you see how much one zero can do to us?
And that was, and that was, that was where you approved the money to pay for the construction there on Old Country Road that we just talked about. Okay, then if we go down to number seven?
Yep.
Let's just spell that out, five-hundred, that should be five-hundred thousand, not five-fifty.
Where's?
Under Mr. Lee, he made a motion to approve.
Oh, oh, the bold, I was wondering.
Oh, yeah, I was looking at the other ones all say five-hundred.
Okay, Roger that.
That was five-hundred thousand.
Great catch, John. You see that, Joe? You're throwing basketballs by me here today.
Okay, and then on page three, under revenue report.
Page four.
Page four, right, John.
Page four, sorry about that, can't even read. Under revenue report, the second part of that sentence, I'd like to cross out because I don't think I said that, and it's certainly not right. Mr. Cifrelli explained that the end of the year, any surplus in individual line items must be encumbered to carry over to the following year. That's totally incorrect, so I would just take that out, and I know I didn't say that.
You did mention something to me, John.
There are some items.
I think it was more on the expense report side, I think.
Yeah, and if they didn't spend it, they're not encumbered, that goes back to our surplus.
Unless we do encumber it, because we are allowed to do.
Right, right, right.
Yeah, take out the.
And then under expense report, he expects that they will break even with expenses and there will be a surplus in revenues, let's take out, and is optimistic that there could. I would say there will be. I know there, I know when we met in June, there was going to be a surplus in revenue.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, because that would have been interest. Well, they, we lost the AMITI, but we got a credit, so it all, but the interest was up.
And then we made, we made money on the building permits, too, because of the increase of the fees that we talked about.
I have, I saw something on page three.
Let me just roll right there, what number we got there?
Item eight.
Item eight, yes.
Chairman spelling. Vice chairman.
With an A, chairman, singular.
Yeah.
I'm a gentleman, I'm a gentleman, Deb.
Vice chairman, okay, very good.
Oh, John, oh, John, chairman A. The one thing I noticed in the minutes, just as an observation, under the performance from the Connecticut, where are we, Joe? On eight, number eight?
Eight, thank you.
Under year report?
Yep.
Oh, I'm sorry. Talk about Connecticut had the second worst investment performance compared to every other state.
Oh, yeah.
Why would you not fire someone?
That was the articles I brought.
Exactly.
I'd do better than that. I'd have an investigation. There's firing, it's, oh, fire, everything's better.
I checked, I checked AMITI. AMITI one year was eleven-point-two, same as Washington, eleven percent. Basically, we're at five-point-eight, that's a big difference.
It's huge.
Huge difference.
That's, we had slides showing that last year.
State should have millions of billions of dollars.
Over ten years, Joe, you're talking about doubling your money, right? Right? And I asked you how many billions we have?
Forty-four billion, yeah.
Someone contributing somewhere.
Okay, while we're at that, item eight there, Deb, Washington comes out of the blue for most people. So in parentheses after the word Washington, in that first paragraph on number eight, put comma, or in parentheses, number one state, performing state in the USA, or something like that, yeah. That way they say, why Washington? Why are we comparing it to Washington? Well, you know, it's not to say we have to be number one, but that's the outside boundary, I guess you could say.
Jim, I have a question about number seven.
Number which?
Seven.
Seven, go right up there, Ajit, go right ahead, sir.
So there was a request of five-hundred K?
Yep.
And then overrun of thirty K, but it says Mr. Lee made a motion to approve five-fifty K, so this was five-fifty K or five?
No, we fixed that one.
We fixed that one.
Just a few, a little bit ago, we knocked it back down to five-hundred.
Yeah.
We're good there.
We good?
Yeah.
Okay, I think I have one more. On page two, the second paragraph, Deb, that's a, I think both are, I think there's a better word than here's why. Mr. Botaglia illustrated an entire budget process from beginning to end with a complete demo. I think that should be detailed demo. I don't know how I would assess that it was complete anyway, but we also use complete in about six words later. So, you know, I think for both reasons, change that word to detailed because I think that is a fair assessment of what he did. And Mr. Chairman, that's the only other ones I had myself.
And is there a motion to approve as amended?
So moved.
Motion, Kevin, is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second it, no.
Say to my Jim, any further discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. So since I was not there?
We abstained, yes. Both abstained, yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain. We have two abstentions?
Two abstentions, yep.
And, okay, so motion's approved.
Good, good, let me get rid of this, thank you.
Item nine, review revenue and expense reports for September of twenty-twenty-three. John, it's early, but do we have anything to worry about this early in the year?
Uh, there were a couple of things, but nothing really going to be out of whack. I think we're probably going to be a little short in our water for the fire hydrants for the year. When we closed out last year, we were short about twenty, twenty to twenty-five thousand in the year.
Really?
Yeah, there was a, there was an increase in the water fee for the year that we didn't know about. And plus, every time we had a hydrant in town, we had charged for it. So there were a few hydrants added in town, apparently.
Are there any expenses already, John?
I'm just talking in general.
Oh, okay.
They did pretty good on the tax collection for July.
Could I make a comment on that?
Yeah.
What I did is I went back and looked at this, here's, and I'd like, Joe, maybe you could jot these numbers down. Jot down three numbers, fifty, fifty-two, nine, fifty-eight, and eighty-nine-point-two. Apologize for not having more time to, and the supplemental motor vehicle is a point-two, so you could make it eighty-nine-point-four. So what I did was I went back and looked up the last month of a year ago, right, in the files, in my files here, anyway. Now that I know how to increase the font, I feel like a kid in a candy shop. Okay, so Joey, here's what we got. I'm trying, man, I'm trying. I've got fifty, whoops, this is the wrong one. Personal property, oh, here it is, real property, fifty-two, four, how's that compare?
Pretty good, fifty-two, nine, yeah.
Fifty-two, nine, okay, so we're up a half a point. Fifty-eight for personal property? Same number, and eighty-nine-point-seven.
Yeah, yeah, we got eighty-nine-point-four, so point-three.
All right, so on a percentage basis, the numbers would be changing because of the years. We're, we're as good as last year, right, you know, on major efforts, right? So I think that's a good way of looking at it.
He is now working on his new collection system down there, let's say, for taxes with the credit cards and the e-checks and all that.
Oh, down here?
In the tax office.
Oh, in the tax.
And he hopes to have that in, in play for the January collection.
Well, the e-check's already there, that's how I pay.
Well, he's doing, we're putting in a whole new system, though.
Okay.
Whole new, he's.
Still only going to be a buck or two?
Yeah.
Well, Joe, here's another way to look at it.
Credit cards are going down a little bit.
John, here's another way to look at it I didn't think of. I probably should have just said, the total for that category, Kevin, was fifty-five, four last year, and it's fifty-six, two this year, the total cap. That's even better, right? Then we could dive into the details, so there's a learning that I can take home from myself.
The only problem there is, right now, that I see, and he would expand on it because it's a problem with all the tax collectors, is the motor vehicle. I mean, that motor vehicle should be closer to a hundred percent because we're on a one-time payment. But he's right there right now. He sends out his collection notices. When they go to register their car, they can't register them if the taxes aren't paid. So we'll collect a little interest there. When they go to register their car, they can't register them if the taxes aren't paid, so we'll collect a little interest there and we'll get it.
Don't we, we get, we used to, I remember a very significant, not exactly household finance in the old days, but I, I remember something like eighteen percent.
Yeah, statutory rate.
It's almost like we should be rooting on people not paying.
You can see, he's already collected almost seventy thousand dollars in interest, sixty-nine.
Sixty-nine, two-two-six, oh, for interest. Oh, okay, is all of that, that could be housing too, right?
That's everything, but it's a pretty good number.
Yeah, okay.
We've, we've collected again our, uh, fall half Erasfer Country Quad money.
What page is that on, John?
That came in already, uh, page two.
And where will we find that?
Under treasurer, under land rent.
Land rent.
Yeah, the hundred and twenty-five.
Could we hide it better? It's called land rent, but it's translated into Racebrook, Kentucky, from, uh.
Racebrook, C.C.
Okay. Just need a translator. I, I have my Brian Casey translator for two thousand twenty-three. I don't know if I have my Al Williams.
So then on the, on the expense side, if you look in the transfer and adjustment column, I've done most of the transfers for the salaries. Uh, don't forget, most of our union contracts are settled after we did the budget and.
Right, so that's what those adjustments are.
That's what most of the salary adjustments are.
Yep.
And they look huge, but remember, they're over two years.
Okay, but the total amount, you know, you know, you know, is for that category is eight hundred and forty-eight, right? So in an eighty million dollar budget.
Uh, no, 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 no. Some of that eight forty-eight is encumbrances from previous years.
Under transfers and adjustments?
Right.
Oh, and the adjustment side of it.
Right, right. I would say most of that is encumbrances.
To one fifty, sixty-four.
So like the assessor's salary? Is, is he in a union?
Yes.
He is.
Yes.
So that's a two-year number.
That's a two-year number, to get him to where he is now.
So John, on this page here, page twenty-three, capital reserve, one sixty-four.
Yeah, that, that includes a couple of things we're doing in the, in the, in the town. I think it's got thirty-six thousand in it for, uh, the engineer that we had to hire at Fred Wolf Park to do the studies over there. So I found the money in that budget and I encumbered it over into capital. And then I moved some other encumbrances over to capital for some future special needs.
For capital. That's good.
Which I've done for the past probably five years.
All right, so we'll just slide up here. We can see a couple of major encumbrances or transfers numbers here, Kev, right? I don't know if they were on your list.
Yeah, you see, that workman's comp, that one eighty-seven.
Yes.
That's been being carried over for quite a few years. If you remember, when I first came here, the workman's comp was kind of, um, a little messy, let's say. They hadn't, uh, estimated the right labor numbers for the years and stuff, so there was some savings in there and I kept it. And at some point in time, we may, I may ask you to move that to, uh, accrued sick leave. I wanna build up that accrued sick leave account because we are gonna have some.
When you say you may want us to move that, what is the that you're referring?
The one eighty-seven.
Okay.
But that'll be down the road.
That'll be down the road.
That'll be down the road.
Well, listen, why don't we just wear out this, uh, middle column here when we see something big? And, um, you took off, brought in a two hundred thousand negotiation reserve. I guess you had too much in there, or is that the deal?
No, that's all, that's where all the raises came from.
Raises come from.
Well, but I'm saying the budget for it, Kev, went down if I read the forty-one thousand, right? No?
It went down even more because there was an encumbrance in there also.
Yeah, because we would've carried forward from the prior year from the negotiation.
Okay. I'm just trying to understand the pluses and minuses, you know, I see two, budget of two hundred thousand. I see now, now we only need a budget of one fifty-eight. I start saying to myself, oh, we don't need as much budget for that category.
So John, basically you had to go back two years on retro, is that right, for some of the contracts?
Yes.
Two-year deal.
Yes. We had, we had no contracts for most of the unions as of June thirtieth, two thousand two.
Twenty-two.
So when we did the budget for twenty-three, we had nothing.
Right.
And we did the budget for next year, we had mostly nothing.
Right, right, yep.
I think as you go through it, you can see we've hit at least most of the major ones in that column. Uh, we can kinda know the columns, a good, probably good month. Sixty-one thousand in this category though, and we haven't gotten to the ones that are popping out.
That one there, some of the, you see that fourteen thousand?
Yeah.
That, that line item not only got a, a raise, but they got a bump up in their, in their salary besides the three percent raise. They got three and two point seven five because they were, that one, that position was under, was under what the market was.
Right.
Or is. And that happened in quite a few spots.
Yep.
That building maintenance, that thirty thousand you see there, that's a encumbrance I made from the last budget. We're gonna be doing some painting in the town hall, including this room, and I was able to find the money in our last budget.
You're not gonna take off the.
No. Everybody asks that.
Good.
All the paintings?
They're gonna stay.
Yeah, yeah.
They're gonna stay.
I should hope so. Give him a, give him a boost or something. Oh, I T.
You can see there, the salary line items, but most of those are only one year.
Software licensing, what percent increase is that? Six.
And along to that, and those other line items were encumbrances from the previous year.
Okay.
Pull them over.
So what used to be in the last year an encumbrance when we ended the year, might in the following year come in over to column two there, this transfer?
If I don't, if I don't close them.
Ah.
If I close them, they go ba- they go to fund balance. If I encumber them, when we close the year, they fall into that column as a adjustment.
Oh, so that would be an easy, we could take a picture of one of these and explain it that way.
It's like a carryover.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it's already been expensed in a previous year's budget.
Right. Okay, well, well, good. Ask reasonably early in their year to know where we, you know, overall.
Yeah, we're not even a quarter.
Yeah.
No, not yet.
All right, thank you, John. Good job.
Anything else?
Do we got any big contracts coming up this year?
Uh, they're all gonna run out, I think, in, uh, two of them are gonna run out June thirtieth of twenty-four.
Yep.
And the other four are gonna run out June thirtieth of twenty-five.
And the AMI teachers is coming up.
Yeah, that's a big one.
Well, same for the orange.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Item number ten.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Kevin.
P J.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jim. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose abstain unanimous. Meeting adjourned at eight-ten.
Originally, and when they moved in to Orange, which was on the post road, and.